It's 5:30. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, and if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Have the commissioners reviewed the agenda, and are there any modifications or additions?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay. With that, then I'll entertain a motion.
May we approve the agenda as presented?
You have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item D, we have a presentation. I'd like to turn the microphone over to Chief Harrison.
Good evening. Welcome to Neo Walla Week. Today, or tonight, I want to recognize Pastor Brandy Memes-Raim. So, I'm happy for her, but I'm disappointed for us because she is moving on in her career. So, I look forward to all the accomplishments and successes that she's going to experience in her new home and her new church. But, before she leaves, I want to recognize her. She is a founding member of the Police Chiefs Advisory Committee, and she has been very instrumental in helping the police department become more transparent. Part of being transparent is providing information that's of value to activists and other people in the community, and oftentimes, we don't always know what it is that people want to know about us. So, I appreciate the role that she's played there in helping us become more transparent as an agency, and also being the voice of the citizens that she has served in that role on the Police Chiefs Advisory Committee. And I have some other members here. If you're on the Police Chiefs Advisory Committee, can you stand up, please? Got a couple other members here. We have a future member here, too. So... And I really appreciate the role that all the members of the committee serve in helping us remain relevant to the community. So, I have a plaque here for you, Brandy, and it says, "In recognition of community service honoring Brandy Memes-Raim, thank you for serving as a citizen's voice on the Independence Police Chief Advisory Committee," and it has today's date.
We really appreciate Brandy getting involved right off the bat to bring in fresh ideas and new input. It really helps when we have people coming from other cities to Independence to add new insight to what we kind of take for granted and can really help build and start new works. And we really appreciate all you've done and wish you the best as you continue on. So, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that I don't have any concerns with the consent agenda, so I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Next item on the agenda, we have a public hearing, so I'll open a public hearing for 905 West Sycamore. And Don, would you present, please?
Yes, so I've talked with the owner this week. Her husband is planning on being here sometime, hopefully in the beginning of November, so we can go through the property. They have been making some progress on this property, getting it cleaned up, getting the inside cleaned up, windows, different things. We're satisfied that it is still their intent to rehabilitate this property and get it to where it can be either for rental or for resale after it's been completed, most likely rental property. So, I anticipate, hopefully, within the first two weeks of November, depending upon his work schedule, I guess he drives, he operates a crane, so he's going up to North Dakota. She said he's supposed to be done the first week of November, and then they would swing by here to do that, to go through the property. So, it's our recommendation that we adjourn for 60 days on this property.
Okay. There's no representative of the owner present, then? Anyone in the public that's interested in addressing the commission concerning this With that, then I will close the public hearing and open for commission discussion. Commissioners?
Sounds great to me.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. So, your recommendation is a 90-day extension?
Yes. I said 60, I meant 90.
Huh?
Yeah, I said 60, I meant 90. I mean, I will add that they have been very, very cooperative there, and they are proactive getting ahold of me and trying to get things worked out. So, I think frustration with her husband's work schedule, getting him here to help coordinate, getting all of this put together, so...
Okay, great. That's what we want to hear. Okay, then we will adjourn the hearing for now.
I'll make a motion to do so, if you'd like. Okay, so I move we adjourn the public hearing for 905 West Sycamore until January 24th, 2019, at 5:30 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
The next one is 1701 North 10th Street.
Yes, I'll open the public hearing for 1701 North 10th Street, Building 4.
Sorry.
No, no.
My son's got a football game. So, yes, this is one where they had the fire. The fire was mainly to the four units on the west side of the building. Some of the units on the east side of the building were damaged by smoke and water. So, I've talked to their representative, the representative of the construction side of Belmont, which owns the property. They have worked out the insurance settlement, they're working to get contractors' bids, reviewing those bids and anticipate, starting here, probably within the next three weeks, on the repairs to the building. So, it is staff's recommendation that we adjourn this for 90 days, and we are very comfortable that they will move forward with repairs and reconstruction of this building.
Okay. And is there a representative from the owner? Representative from the public? Anyone in the public want to address the commission? Okay, with that, then I will close the public hearing and open it for commission discussion. Any comments, commissioners?
No.
Okay, if there's no further comment, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn the public hearing for 1701 North 10th Street, Building Number 4, to January 24th, 2019, at 5:30 PM.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is consider a request from the Chamber's Diversity Task Force for the city to cosponsor a community potluck on November 18th from 1:00 PM to 2:30 PM
After the success of the Celebrate Our Roots event, the Diversity Task Force, which is part of the chamber, would like to have a potluck at the Civic Center on November 18th from 1:00 to 2:30. It's right before the holiday parade, and we were hoping that you would like to cosponsor with us. Main Street has already agreed to cosponsor, so we were hoping that you would like to do that as well.
On our, the cosponsoring has been something we've been looking into our part. You know, I'm supportive of the work that the task force is doing. You know, the term cosponsor without us having it defined is the only issue that I have. I'm willing for the city to let you use the property if that's your primary request, but not being totally defined on what cosponsor is and our limits and our connection and future of other people requesting, but, you know, the task force is...
So, would you like me to define it, or not?
Well, from what I saw, your information was just requesting us to let you use Memorial Hall. Was there more involvement, or...
Well, I think we would like to have more involvement if you would like to be. There's no need for that if we have enough volunteers, I think.
So, is there, nothing worked out in details of how much more involvement would be other than the building?
Did you hear that?
No.
She just wants you, we would like to know if you're in support of what we're doing.
Oh, definitely in support of it. I attended the last function, and it was, it was really good, the interaction with the foods. And no, I'm very supportive of the event, just the term. Because it can open doors when we cosponsor without a definition, then how do we say no to a group that could be subversive or other issues?
That makes sense.
So, you know, definitely want to see it happen, plan to be there, and anything we can do.
You can bring something to eat.
Well, you know, I was, I was kind of thinking about that, too. If it's going to be total potluck, I thought I might put an apron on and whip up something. But, no, it's really a good program. In fact, at the League of Kansas Municipality Conference, there was a Municipal Training Institute course on valuing diversity and brought out a lot of excellent points that I hope to get the teacher in touch with, the Diversity Task Force, to see about making a presentation.
That would be great.
Here in the town, because it had a lot of interesting thoughts of our mindset, recognizing the values of diversity and understanding what each of us go through. So, this is really exciting to see the, go from the first dinner to a potluck dinner.
Thank you.
So, commissioners?
No, I'm, I think we're all supportive, just backing what Lyndard had said earlier. It was the term that's kind of throwing us for a loop, and we're looking at trying to define what that actually means. It has nothing to do with us not supporting the effort of this event, and matter of fact, I may actually cook something, too. I'm not going to promise it's going to be edible, but I'll bring something.
Hot dogs are pretty hard to run.
Well, yeah, I have run them before.
If there's no other discussion, do I have a motion?
I'll move to cosponsor the Diversity Task Force Community Potluck on Sunday, November 18th, 2018, from 1:00 PM to 2:30 PM at Memorial Hall Civic Center.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Next item on the agenda, consider setting the date of December 27th, 2018, at 5:30 PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of a structure located at 301 North 11th Street as dangerous and unsafe. Don?
There was a fire there upstairs, and so we're trying to work, the homeowner, I believe, is here tonight, we're willing to speak, just want to work with him, make sure repairs get done. So, I anticipate when December 27th comes across, we'd probably recommend to take it off the agenda if work goes forward as he's anticipating. So, I'll let him speak if he wants to speak.
Would you state your name?
My name's Michael Morse, and I've talked to a contractor who's interested in buying the home and renovating the home, because I don't have the money to fix that house the way it needs to be fixed. So, I'll just meet with him this next week and see where that goes, and if there's any fall-through on that, then I just need to know who I need to contact to solve the matter for you guys. That's all.
Yeah, stay in touch with Don, and he'll walk you through the whole procedure, and you know, he'll keep us notified and you of when you need to come back, and appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, any other discussion?
No.
No discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to set the date of December 27th, 2018, for a public hearing to consider condemnation of the fire damage complex located at 301 North 11th.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Next item on the agenda, consider setting the date of December 27th, 2018, at 5:30 PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of a structure located at 609 West Myrtle Street as dangerous and unsafe.
Yeah, there was a fire there, mainly confined to the attic area, but considerable smoke and water damage throughout the structure. So, we're wanting to make sure that that structure gets repaired and gets where it needs to be after that fire. I do not believe that the owner is present.
Sounds like it was an electrical system?
Yeah, it sounds like it. I believe that's what it was, yes.
Have you visited with the owner?
I've visited with the owner, one of the owners, and she said, you know, she's not sure what they're going to do at this time, so hopefully between now and December, they can make a decision on what they would like to do with the property, so...
Do you know if it was vacant when the fire took place?
No, it was not vacant at the time.
Any further questions for Don or discussion?
No.
And then I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we set the date of December 27th, 2018, for a public hearing to consider condemnation of the fire damage complex located at 609 West Myrtle.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item D, consider authorizing receipt of bids for removal of condemned structures located at 500 South Wald Avenue and 606 Fountain Street.
Yes, so both of these properties, there has been no work done on either one of these properties. We would be happy to see these properties removed and, so...
I'm going to guess the owner's not in the room by looking at the audience.
The owners are not in the room? Yeah, and so, these are ones that are troubling, so we would like to, we'd like to see them taken out.
On the, the properties where we're having them removed, the contractors aren't leaving the lots mobile.
No, so I went yesterday with the contractor that, the normal, the contractors we've used in the past, we don't have many issues with. So, this contractor that we used the last time hired a subcontractor, we found out to do the work, and according to him, there was communication loss between him and the subcontractor. So, we went to each one of the lots yesterday, said this is what needs to be done. So, he is supposed to be back Monday or Tuesday to start clearing and getting the rest of it cleared off the way that we would like for it to be done.
And the one at 14th and Magnolia, he's leaving a lot of them with holes. That one's...
Yeah.
The dirt at the sidewalk is...
Yeah, we discussed that as well, so...
And on South 6th, both of those are pretty rough.
Yep.
So, that contractor had not done...
He had not worked for the city before. This is the first time we had worked for the city.
Gotcha.
He had done any work for the city, so it's been, it's been a process to get on the same page with him.
But it looks to me like these two really need to go. They're dragging down the neighborhoods terribly.
Yeah, they are, and nothing has been, nothing has happened on either one of these properties.
They're just killing property values.
Yes, they are.
To address your concerns, if the contractor doesn't follow up and do what Don wants him to do, the way the bid language is set out, and he bids again, even if he's a low bid, the staff could say he's not a qualified bidder because his previous work was shotting, so they could reject his bid.
Well, they have to put up a deposit, too, don't they, that we, we have the money if it doesn't accept...
There's a bond on that, yeah. There's a bond that they've put forward on that. So, I mean, we've gone through and explained to them, you know, we're, there's chunks of concrete, there's bricks, there's holes, there's concrete that wasn't removed, there's debris, it's hard on our equipment.
Large tree roots sticking up.
Large tree roots, it's not done the way that it was written in the contract, so hopefully we have an understanding now after having driven to each one of them individually and walked them about what we want to have done.
Yeah, because we got both the, the bond to get it completed correctly, and then the language, in this case where the successful bidder hired a subcontractor, both of them could be restricted from bidding.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Makes you work twice as hard.
We tried to make, tried to make that clear to them as we were going through the lots, that this has been a long process. I'm sure he wants to get paid. I'm sure he has expenses out there that he wants to recover, and so... He told us he had worked for a lot of municipalities before, so we're, hopefully, he's understanding exactly what we want. I don't think we're any different than any other municipalities, so...
Yeah, sometimes there's a big interpretation. I've heard the same thing.
Yeah.
On projects that they will tell you that they've performed for other, in your case, municipalities, but your standard might be a little higher than the other municipalities, which doesn't change the fact...
Well, you know, I don't think I could talk to Mike Passour, leaving it the way that he is. I think he'd break a mower every day on the way that those lots were left.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion for these two properties? Not all entertain them.
Do we need two separate motions, or can we do it as one?
You can do it as one.
Okay. I move to seek bids for the removal of 500 South Wald Avenue and 606 Fountain Street.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, item E, consider rescheduling the November 20th, 2018 City Commission meeting.
I asked if that be put on the list. I, I will be gone that entire week of Thanksgiving, and I know you two can certainly handle it without me, but I just thought I'd mention it in case one of you was planning to be gone, too.
No, we could, what's the week of the 26th look like?
Could do it the 29th.
Yeah, that'd be fine with me, as far as I know, yeah. Already that.
So, for notification, we'll do that on Facebook, the website, and also when we mail out the notices to the people that have requested. Should we email that ahead of time? What's the proper procedure?
We can email, that's not a problem.
Yeah, just so that they won't be anticipating on the 20th. Next item...
Are you going to make it official?
Oh, we better, shouldn't we?
Make it official?
Yeah, let's do, let's do official, I guess. Do I have a motion?
Motion to move the commission meeting to November 29th at 5:30.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Next item F, consider final assessed valuation and final mill levy for 2019.
I'll give a brief introduction, and Mike and I can probably answer questions. As you know, when you adopted the budget, you adopted a tax levy, the dollar amount to be raised from property tax. That was $2,599,539. At the time, of course, we only had an estimated assessed valuation from the county. They recently finalized the assessed valuation. It went down, so if we're, if we're going to continue, if we're going to raise 2.6 million dollars as approved in the budget, the tax rate will change. You know the formula, I don't think I need to explain it further than that. And as you can see, it goes up slightly by .335 mils. So, there's, our recommendation is, of course, is you approve the budget at 2.599 million, that's what we need for operations, so we just leave it at that, at that rate. So, the rate would go up a little bit. I think attached to the RCA shows you a net impact on the $1,000 house and then a $70,000 house. As any time, depending on a revaluation, when we set the tax rate, some people's taxes may go up. You can keep the rate the same, you know, evaluations change, and that formula kicks in, so some people see an increase, some are same, some are decreased. Just depends on your specific situation. So, our recommendation is just to keep at the two-point, keep the tax levy the same. Otherwise, we'd have to cut out $16,000.
When we set the rate, you brought that up, was your intent to keep the amount that the levy would generate the same, or, you know, because it's, it's really an ambiguous process that no matter, you know, with using the mill levy, you can never guarantee that everybody's taxes are not going to go up because it's based upon valuation. And the mill levy is the result of the difference between revenue and expenses to generate that shortfall that's not there with revenue. But, you know, when we looked at it, we discussed the amount as being the same, and I think our intent was in was overall to not raise taxes, but that's impossible because no matter what you do, you lower the mill levy, some people, their valuation went up, is going to get a tax increase.
Right. As I recall, again, that commitment in the budget is, from 2018 to 2019, we kept that 2.599 million stable, the same. From 2017 to 2018, we actually went down, but we kept it the same. That was the...
Yes, on the, on the 19th budget, the 2019 budget, you know, you asked that we did not raise taxes, so we kept the mill levy the same, and with that, I backed into the calculation to produce the rate. So, that, that was what we worked with.
Yeah, I think that's where we need to watch our wording, because we can never... Yeah, I think that's where we need to watch our wording, because we can never say we're not going to raise taxes because it affects, it depends on people's evaluation. But we can say we're not going to increase spending, which that's what we, we hold true too, but...
So in, basically, in a nutshell, we are, we are staying with the $2,599,539, which was the original intent, and this was a little confusing for me when we went through this the first time, so if there's an issue with that, then that's going to, that's going to lie with me as far as the interpretation as I saw it. And then as I got into it and asked a few more questions with other people, and they explained some other things to me, and it made it a little clearer, but, but that was the original intent, intent to stay with the $2,599,539, and that's what we, that's what we're doing.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's a better direction to look at justifying and trying to maintain or decrease our spending. Everyone, you know, even, even I've looked at what the mill levy was and why taxes are going up or down, well, you've got to bring it into play with the evaluation of your particular property.
Right.
And even, like I said, a decrease in the mill levy could make me pay an increase in taxes if my property valuation went up, so, you know, I, I think, holding with the $2,599,539 is acceptable. That's what we started to do, didn't increase spending, and the mill levy needs to justify. And we're not, you know, unless we want to knock five or 600,000 out of the budget, you know, to knock 16,000, you know, a small number like that, it's, it can be done, but it's not going to accomplish anything because still, some people's taxes are going to go up.
Right. That sounds good to me. Like I said, I had it explained to me because I asked a couple of questions, and then it made more sense that time around, so, but I think the original intent was what we all agree upon, and that's what we're going to go with. But that's what I'm going to go with, excuse me, don't mean to speak for you, TJ.
No, I think you're, I think you both said it exactly right. We have to be careful not to say we're not raising taxes because we really have no control over that, but keep the levy the same, keep spending the same.
Yes.
I, as you may know, I now own six properties, my wife and I. One of them, the county says is worth 10 times what I paid for it, and one of them, they say it's worth half what I have in it, so, who knows? Yeah, I think, I think this is the right way to go.
So if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the final mill rate, 54.422, as provided by Montgomery County, for the 2019 adopted budget with a final assessed valuation of $47,765,990.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carry. The next item on the agenda is city manager's comments.
I have no comments other than happy knee wallah.
Commissioner comments? Commissioners?
I have none.
Yes, I do. Kelly, I sent a couple of streetlights that I've determined were not, they were not West Star's responsibility, and they're the ones that the intersection of North Penn and Chestnut. And so those, so I contacted West Star to make sure, and I didn't find an identifying number on the poles, and they explained to me, well, they weren't the West Star's responsibility. So the northeast and the northwest corner last night were both out. The northeast corner has been out for several, several weeks, and the northwest corner, it may just need a bulb replacement because sometimes the light's on, and sometimes you drive back through the intersection and it's dark, so, and last night, both of them were dark, and so there'd be a lot of foot traffic through there, and it may be something we want to go ahead and look at and see if we can't get that addressed.
Are they city-owned or are they private property-owned?
They're...
The city has some of those if they're tied in with traffic lights somehow. Some of them are.
Yeah, I believe the...
Not very many, but there's a few.
I think those, those on Chestnut, I think West Star put up that the city's responsibility to maintain, so, so I wondered why they weren't, they weren't fixed, and then when I got to checking, then it was pointed out to me that they weren't actually West Star lights, so...
Okay.
That's all I had.
Okay, I have no comments. Public concerns, we didn't receive any requests. Executive session for personal matter of non-elected personnel. Did you have...
Just make a motion.
Make a motion, we go to executive session for discussion of non-elected personnel matters according to KSA 75-4319B, Room 1. We'll be in 20 minutes and be the commissioners, city manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Yeah, what time would that...
Be 20 minutes?
We'll return back at 7:30?
6:30.
6:30.
Wow.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry. Okay, we're back in session. We have a motion to extend for...
15?
We have a motion to extend for 15 minutes.
15 minutes?
Minutes, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry. We're back in session, we have no action taken from executive session, so the next item is adjournment. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Seconds?
Motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry.